Good evening. So in compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order an information session of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, February 8th, 2024 at 6:03 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at AISD's central office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Sound Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available in these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us. So next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the Board. This time allow speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing directly to the school board. And as a reminder, the district continues to provide time during the regular voting meetings as well of the Board to hear from the public about agenda items for consideration and vote. So this is really an opportunity for the Board to take part in listening to our community. And while we wish we could respond or provide feedback, we are required to limit our questions to requests for clarification or follow-up directly to the administration. And members of the public wishing to participate in public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to audio record their remarks. So we'll now play the recorded messages for public comments, so please listen carefully.
As you are in budget talks, please remember the speech therapist. As we are not getting paid what evaluators are and our workload continues to increase, our department is hemorrhaging. We don't evaluate and move on to the next consent. We then do the ARD, provide direct services. We also provide communication opportunities to not just speaking students, but also students who are non-speaking and minimally speaking. We identify, provide, and maintain the technology that helps our most vulnerable students access their curriculum due to communication disorders. Currently, there are 20 vacancies that are being covered by expensive contractors that must be trained and mentored by those of us who remain. They typically do not stay with us long. We've had to hire speech pathology assistants that require constant supervision by those of us who do remain and are not, and they are not trained like us, cannot test, do paperwork, or ARD. The amount of workload we do has vastly increased, yet we make so much less than those who just test and move on or just provide services. We hope that you will invest in recruitment and retention for speech pathologists with better work and pay conditions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jane Saltero, and I currently work for AISD as a speech-language pathologist. And I understand that you all are in budget talks, and I would, I am calling to ask you to please remember your speech therapists, those dedicated devoted therapists who care for the students of AISD so much. We are currently have over 20 vacancies. It is hard to retain and keep our speech-language therapists due to the pay that we are getting. So, and now we have lots of contractors, which is requiring more time of those of us that have remained loyal to AISD. And there's so much that we do in addition to evaluations and ARD meetings and therapy and bill for Medicaid and prepare paperwork and consult with teachers and email parents and just keeping, we're the cohesive tie in special education. So again, please consider a pay raise for us. It's well deserved.
Okay, thank you. So this concludes public comment. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? Trustee Boswell.
Yes, thank you. Superintendent Segura, I know we've been hearing from our speech pathologists since last year and people concerned that this would happen and was wondering if we should be watching for something in the budget or if you can bring us some more information about vacancies and what the plan is?
Sure, happy, more than happy to provide kind of information regarding where we are and regarding vacancies for SLPs. Certainly for us, you know, monitoring where we have vacancies, different opportunities we have to address compensation, this is an area of focus. Certainly, we do know that last year we did move them to a separate scale to allow for additional opportunities this year. So I think we will be bringing those things forward as part of the budgeting process, for sure.
Thank you.
Any other trustees? All right. So as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions with the Board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. So next we have the President's Report, and I believe this is the first time I can say that we are here with Superintendent Segura, not interim superintendent, so that's exciting. As part of the agreed order with the Texas Education Agency, the agreement requires that the Board shall, at the first Board authorized public meeting each month, publicly report by reading into the records, A, the percentage of time invested in student outcomes and special education monitoring during the prior three-month time period, and B, the total time spent in closed session during the prior month. So we started calculating minutes in October. The November, December, and January three-month average of Board meeting time spent on Lone Star Governance to find student outcomes and sped monitoring was 61.54 percent. Very exact, thank you, Dr. Reach. And for the last month, January 2024, we were at 84.88 percent. Nice job, Board. The Board spent 482 minutes in executive session in January. This is the first month in the official TEA required calculation we will provide in April. So per the order, we have to remain at 50 percent or more of our public Board meeting time on Lone Star Governance to find student outcomes and special education monitoring, and we are on track for this requirement. I want to remind folks that early voting for the March primary starts on, does anybody know?
February 20th.
Yes, I knew trustee Boswell would know. It is critical that everyone who can vote does vote. So again, February 20th is when it starts. The League of Women Voters has a nonpartisan voter's guide that gives information on the races and the candidates. You can find that online or in our libraries. You can vote at dozens of locations, including some of our favorites, the Millennium Youth Complex, UT Flon Academic Center, the Austin City Hall, the Carver Branch Library, the George Morales Duff Springs Rec. Center, and many more locations. If you need information, just go to votefor11.org. Again, that's votefor11.org. This Saturday marks the start of the Lunar New Year, which celebrates a new calendar and is one of the largest celebration in many Asian countries. This holiday honors family ancestors and is typically observed with large family gatherings, celebrations, and fireworks. And the Chinese zodiac 2024 is the Year of the Dragon, part of a 12-year repeating cycle of animals that assigns attributes and reflections of the local culture for those born under the signs. So in addition to multiple community events, many AISD campuses are holding special Lunar New Year events, including a program tonight at Riley Elementary School and events next Friday, February 16th at Jocelyn and Summit Elementary. So hopefully folks will take advantage of some of that. Also, as we shared at our last meeting, the Board is starting a community listening and, community listening engagement over the next few weeks to hear from our students, staff, families, and community members on the vision and values of the district. Our purpose is to gather input from the community, which along with student performance data describing the current reality for our students, will help us identify our vision for what students should know and should be able to do. This will go into a five-year student outcome goal framework, which will include the non-negotiable values to be honored while working toward their achievement. And so we're really excited about this. We just refer to this as the scorecard. And we are working with our Lone Star Governance Coach, Ashley Paz, to get that going, and I really appreciate our committee that has been the masterminds behind how we're going to be doing a lot of this community engagement, but stay tuned for more information because that's going to be starting this month. So, let's see. We are, I do want to mention that if you have any thoughts on any of this, and you can't make it to any of the meetings that you'll be hearing about, again, you can always email trustees@austinisd.org. And if you'd like to invite a trustee to your organization during this time period to talk about this and have a listening session, please let us know. All right, so next we have student achievement. So this is part of our commitment to discuss, you know, student achievement. We have a presentation on the middle-of-the-year third-grade MAP growth reading reporting for students who are receiving special education services. Before we hear the presentation, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. So I appreciate the administration for posting the presentation online for us to review ahead of time. So does anyone, any trustee have evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? Okay, well, let's see here. All right, well, since everyone agrees that the required elements are present, we will turn the floor to Superintendent Segura for the presentation.
Thank you, President Seeng and Board. The team and I will present on the Special Education Student Performance on Goal Progress Monitoring, 1.1 and 1.2 tonight. I have joining me here Patricia Rodriguez, Deputy Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Leading. We have Dr. Robinett, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education Programs. We have Dr. Lee, Executive Director of Instructional Delivery, and Dylan Finan, Director of Campus and District Accountability. I have been working on that last name, I've said it wrong multiple times, and we go back a ways, so I apologize. I wanted to make sure I got it right. So as we can see on the presentation, this is a Goal Progress Monitoring 1.1, 1.2, middle-of-the-year MAP Growth Reading, Students Receiving Special Education Services. As we move onto Slide 2, I do want to point out to our community that this is part of the retooled scorecard. For those that are following along, the retooled scorecard is a scorecard that the Board will be using through the end of this, this school year. The Board will, over the course of the spring semester, be working with our Lone Star Governance Coach, getting information from our community to develop the updated scorecard, which will be what we use to monitor outcomes for many years to come. So on Slide 2, just to point out, Goal 1 and Goal Progress Measuring Alignment. Goal 1, specifically third-grade students earning MEETS grade level on the STAR reading assessment in English or Spanish, will increase from 49 percent in June of 2020 to 60 percent by June of 2026. And the Growth Progress Measure 1.1, students identified on the reading MAP assessment for third grade at the ON grade level or above will increase from 35 percent in June of 2021 to 60 percent by August of 2026. And then Growth Progress Measure 1.2, students identified on the, on the reading MAP assessment for second grade at the ON grade level or above will increase from 24 percent in June of 2021 to 60 percent by August of 2026. And so now I'll hand it over to Dylan to take us through the Goal Progress Measures 1.1, 1.2 data.
Good evening. Yes, so we're going to look at Goal Progress Measure 1.1 and 1.2, and tonight we're going to take a deeper look at students receiving special education services. So to remind you, two weeks ago, we looked at 1.1 and 1.2 in the context of all students, and you'll see in the chart up there, those are the gray bars or the gray rows. And if we look at the white rows that go across, that shows you the performance for students receiving special education services. Now we're looking at students ON grade level. To remind you, we measure ON grade level with STAR projected proficiency at MEETS grade level or higher. So MEETS grade level or higher is our metric that correlates to ON grade level. And STAR projected proficiency means that a student's RIT score on the MAP assessment predicts that they're going to get a score of MEETS grade level or higher at the end of the year regardless of any interventions. If they have below MEETS grade level, that means it would take significant interventions for them to be at MEETS grade level or higher or move up a performance level. So that's what the STAR projected proficiency value is. So the percentages you see there reflect the percentage of students that have a STAR projected proficiency value of MEETS grade level or higher. And so if you remember from two weeks ago, in third grade, all students for reading, in the fall, 43 percent had a STAR projected proficiency value of 43 percent at MEETS grade level or higher. And in the winter, they had, 44 percent of students were projected to be at MEETS grade level or higher, and our target was 50 percent. If we look at special education students within that group, what we see is, in fall, 18 percent of them were projected to be at MEETS grade level or higher, and in the winter, 21 percent of them were projected to be at MEETS grade level or higher. And our goal by the end of the year is that we hope 25 percent of them or more are at MEETS grade level or higher when they take the STAR test. Now in second grade, all students, 43 percent, were projected to be at MEETS grade level or higher in the fall, and 44 percent were projected to be at MEETS grade level or higher in the winter, and our goal there once again was 50 percent. If we look at second-grade students receiving special education services, in the fall, 24 percent were projected to be at MEETS grade level or higher, and in the wintertime, 22 percent were projected to be at MEETS grade level or higher, and our goal for this group was 25 percent. I must point out that in second grade, this only reflects English testers because NWEA doesn't provide us with a STAR projected proficiency value for Spanish testers. We have students that test in Spanish, but they don't calculate a STAR projected proficiency value for that group. So if we look once again at GPM 1.1, in relation to students receiving special education services, in reading, 21 percent of third-grade students receiving special education services have a STAR projected proficiency value of MEETS grade level or above. AISD is currently four percentage points, or approximately 47 students shy of meeting our end-of-the-year goal, which is 25 percent. And when we look at these graphs, we're looking at the blue bar in the middle, and we want the blue bar to hit that dotted line. That dotted line is our goal of 25 percent. So we look at this same metric for second grade on the next slide. We see that in reading, 22 percent of second-grade students receiving special education services have a STAR projected proficiency value of MEETS grade level or above. This is three percentage points shy of our end-of-the-year goal, which is 25 percent, and that represents approximately 28 students shy of our goal.
So as we're thinking about Goal 1 and the instructional alignment and support in the area of reading, we want to sort of think about how does this nest within what you often ask about, sort of correlations or root causes, or what do we see from the look-back as some areas where we might want to improve and where we're already planning for improvement as a team? You recall that in the prior meeting, there was some discussion around implementing high-quality instructional resources with greater alignment, opportunities for greater consistency and coherence in our system, and additional components that we have seen as increasing the need for opportunities for general educators and special educators to have collaboration time in structured ways as part of the intentional planning that our principals are working to address as well. Those things associated with sort of the key inputs in addition to steps that provide gaps for students when we don't have the level of progress monitoring make sometimes our data observational in nature in terms of what we see in classes, and that's part of some of the recommendations that you heard in the January meeting that you'll hear echoes of in terms of the, the presentation this evening related to special education supports for our students as well. Next slide. So why is that important? I'd like for us to consider our context for students, and it's important to nest that for, for the, the staff and community to understand that over three-quarters of our students with disabilities receive their instruction and services and support greater than 80 percent of the day in general education with the appropriate scaffolds, supports, and accommodations. Now, like you, we've been working to lean in on more quality inclusive practices for students in those settings, and we've actually seen that trending better. The state looks at a performance level each year, and what they consider on what is called a results-driven accountability report is districts that are in a range of 70 or to 100 percent of their students, and those more inclusive, leaning towards more and more inclusive settings are trending in the right direction. It's never quite enough, but that is something that they identify. I want you to know that the 76 percent for our students in the 2023 RDA report is actually about 76.6 percent, closer to 77, which is in contrast with some of the prior years where we were at 71, 70, 69, 68. And so you might consider those incremental steps, but as we put students more and more in terms of services and supports, we want to make sure that they're in the system in a way that their needs are being met appropriately in inclusive settings. We understand that commitment, and as we're moving to improve instruction for all students, addressing the needs of students with disabilities in those settings, as well as in where there's more specially designed instruction, is going to lift all boats in terms of our students' improvement and our district's improvement outcomes overall. Next slide, please. So when you consider those percentages, that is part of the, the desire that we've had to provide more generalized training, supports, and resources, not only to, what was a trend before, special educators, but for general educators. We try to convey, and I don't ever want to undermine in any way or give the impression the high-quality special educators that we're have, have and are growing within our district, but they themselves say that they want general educators to see themselves as special educators as well. Perhaps they're not credentialed in the same way, but that shared ownership and that investment needs to not only be at the statement level, but translate it into the training resources and supports that the district provides. So when you consider that as part of our ongoing efforts that you've seen, we're trying to bring those into more and more improved implementation. We've had investments in sort of two larger areas, one around training. All schools, as you know, form guiding coalitions around step-by-step for inclusive schools, including both general educators and special educators, and that team has been part of an ongoing rippling and bubbling in schools, putting those things more into practice and serving as leaders and guidance and team members on their campuses as well. Furthermore, as part of those efforts to increase and improve upon not only the technical skills, but the mindsets of how we address the needs of all students, we, we've seen over 6,100 staff members receiving additional supports around accommodations, modifications, and strengthening inclusive practices for students. We've likewise had an expansion of dyslexia training that you'll have a chance to hear a little bit more about, which is more around that specially designed instruction for students as well. Likewise, the team and you all, when we've, you've made some investments around materials and training around more systematic instruction and phonics for early literacy, those are high-yield practices, systematic and specific practices that likewise support students with disabilities and build that really systematic alignment to the science of teaching, reading, and high-quality practices. Furthermore, our curriculum has been revised more recently and to build in more components of universal design for learning. So when someone receives training and support, if they don't see that echoed in the materials or the resources that they use, there's a missed opportunity for coherence and alignment that we're building upon as a system, as well as tools and scaffolds for instructional strategies. Dr. Lee's going to talk a bit more about what does that look like in terms of the continuum of services and supports for students with the framework that Dr. Stetson and her team have devised for general education through special education and the additional investments you've made in terms of high-quality staff for our classrooms.
Thank you, Dr. Robinett. Dr. Robinett spoke about the majority of our students receiving special education who spend 80 percent or more of their day in general education. And this slide is really going to outline the continuum of those services and supports to meet the individualized needs of students with disabilities. So placement options range from the least restrictive setting, or LRE, in the general education classroom to more restrictive ones, meaning less time spent in general education and more time receiving specialized supports outside of the classroom. So let's take a moment to review in-class special education supports, which can be provided by a special education teacher or teaching assistant, also known as a TA or a paraprofessional. So TA support students by reteaching skills in small groups. They support social communication, independence, transitions, autonomy, and peer relationships under the direction of a special education or classroom teacher, and they also assist in the preparation of teacher, teacher materials in our learning stations. Next slide. So here I'm going to describe six co-teaching models that can be implemented within a general education classroom. Both of our special education instructional specialists on our team provide modeling and coaching around these specific models. So we have our one teach, one assist model, and the teacher's acting as the primary teacher while the other is monitoring student work, checking for understanding, and reinforcing positive behavior. In the one teach, one observe model, we have one teacher acting as the primary teacher while the other one's gathering specific observational data, and that really is used to help inform instruction. Now, station teaching occurs when co-teachers divide their class into small groups to provide instruction at separate stations. We often think about this at the elementary school level, but this can be done in middle school and high school as well. And we have parallel teaching when co-teachers divide the class in half and instruct them on the same materials, and it just allows for smaller group sizes and increases our instructional intensity. We have differentiated teaching where one teacher is managing a large group of students while the other takes a small group for enrichment, remediation, assessment, or pre-teaching, and again, this can happen across all levels. In the team teaching model, both teachers share the responsibilities of lead instruction and lesson planning. Now, each model serves a purpose, and we're systematically working to build strong models across all classrooms. During instructional rounds over the last few weeks, I had the opportunity to observe several of these models in action, including station teaching, one teach, one assist, and differentiated teaching at middle schools and elementary schools. Next slide. So we've talked about modifications, we've talked about accommodations in the past, but modifications and accommodations are instructional adaptations, and they're, they can be critical, and they are critical in ensuring learning, access to learning across settings. So in the photo here, you see an AISD student using Learning Ally, and Learning Ally is a free educational tool. It's endorsed by TEA, and it provides access to thousands of books in Spanish and English for eligible students, and platforms like this are used in our classrooms every day. This one here is at Clayton Elementary School where I was doing a walkthrough and took some pictures. Next slide. So we're going to get into the simple view of reading, and I have this slide projected here to kind of give you a preview of what we're diving into. We're going to talk a little bit about disabilities, and I'm going to also connect that with our TEES as well. All right. So this is a model from Goff &amp; Tunmer, and models can help us understand how kiddos learn to read. So this one was actually developed back in 1986, and you notice here we have the product, which is reading comprehension. That's, that's the goal of all of our early reading instruction, is so that kids can comprehend text. So you see decoding there, and that really refers to phonemic awareness and phonics, kids learning those letter-sound relationships, how to decode, blend those sounds to read words. And then you see language comprehension, and that's, when we're thinking about language comprehension, we're thinking about vocabulary, and we're thinking about grammar, all things oral language, right? And when kids have good phonics skills and they've got good language comprehension and oracy, it's going to lead to reading comprehension, and that's the goal of all of our instruction. But one thing we know is about 80 percent of kiddos with early difficulties in reading have those difficulties right there at that decoding level. Now keep that image in your mind as we scroll to the next image, which right here is our TEES, TEES strand tree. That is quite a mouthful there. But in our TEES, our Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, we have seven strands. They're very similar across ELAR and ESLAR. Due to the unique differences in the structures of the English and Spanish languages, there's some noted variations in phonics and composition, but they're very similar. However, these strands are not weighted equally. Strand 1, the Developing and Sustaining Foundational Language Skills, is shown as the roots of the tree, you'll see there. We've got beginning reading and writing, we've got oral language, we've got vocabulary, we've got fluency, and we've got self-sustained reading. Now those are the substrands within that big strand 1, and then we've also got comprehension. Now I want you to think back, actually, I'm going to have you go back to that lap, the previous slide. All right, so I want you to think about decoding, and I want you to think about language comprehension. Now we'll flip back to the tree. Perfect. So decoding is really that beginning reading and writing, and language comprehension is really the oral language and vocabulary. So when kids have strong beginning reading and writing skills, that's our phonics, our sound awareness, and then they have that strong oral language and vocabulary, we're giving them the best chance to be good comprehenders. Now that right there is, right there in the trunk, those comprehension skills, those are really the two most important strands of our tree, along with composition, which you see up there at the top. All right, you'll see dyslexia, the most common learning disability, oop, go back, sorry, highlighted and specifically called out on this slide. Over 7,600 students in AISD are identified with dyslexia and/or dysgraphia, which is the related disorder. Now students with dyslexia have specific weaknesses in beginning reading and writing skills and reading fluency, and you'll see those arrows pointing there, and when you're thinking about that Goff &amp; Tunmer model, you're really thinking about those, those primary weaknesses in that decoding box, right? The decoding box. That's not to say that kids may not have weaknesses in oral language and vocabulary, but when we're thinking about dyslexia, that's where they are. With dysgraphia, you don't see, on that beginning reading and writing strand, they really should have a little root that says handwriting. But really, with dysgraphia, you're seeing weaknesses in handwriting and spelling, and that's going to contribute to difficulties with composition. All right? So the dyslexia is going to impact comprehension, and the dysgraphia is going to impact the composition. And those are really the most common learning disabilities that we see, not only here in Austin ISD, but in Texas and in the United States as well. So it's really important for our instructional staff to understand the important roles that they play in building and shaping the reading and writing brains of the students that they serve. So our pre-K through three teachers and interventionists, I call them the neural architects, and they're facilitating critical thinking, comprehension, and problem-solving. So are parents, so are siblings. All of those structured conversations, the formal and informal conversations that we're supporting children with, are really building the brain. And teachers also assist in planning and delivery of accommodations in their classrooms, like using Learning Ally. All right, next slide. So we talked a little bit about dyslexia. We're going to dive a little deeper in this slide. Even with high-quality core instruction, some students will experience challenges in their reading trajectory. So I want to point out a few pieces. Effective in August of this past year, House Bill 3928 went into place. And there's a few pieces that that specifically clarifies. One, direct dyslexia instruction is now considered specially-designed instruction. So if students need dyslexia intervention, they need to be receiving that through special education. Two, all evaluation for dyslexia must be conducted through the special education process. And three, someone with specific knowledge of the reading process and dyslexia must be a part of the evaluation team, and they also must be a part of the initial ARD committee when dyslexia is being discussed and determined. Let's talk a little bit about who provides the dyslexia intervention. These people are referred to as Providers of Dyslexia Instruction, another acronym, but they're PDIs. And we have PDIs serving in our school district. We have approximately 123 dyslexia interventionists and about 200 special education teachers that are providing direct dyslexia intervention. And our department supports training through the Dyslexia Center of Austin and also through Region Four. Just since June 2022, we've trained over 600 staff members in one or more of the approved programs. So very grateful for your support for that as well. Next slide. All right, my favorite part, pictures of instruction and instruction in action. All right. So we're going to take a peek at some high-quality instruction. So I want to point out that instruction for students with disabilities doesn't just occur in specialized settings, right? That first teach is critical. And it starts and continues with strong core phonics instruction nested within that ELAR or ESLAR block across our K through three classrooms. So photos on the left highlight a term known as orthographic mapping. That's a really fancy term. But in plain language, I want you to think about that, is phonics instruction, where we're really mapping the speech sounds of our language to the symbols or to the letter or letters that represent them. So pictured on the left is some pictures that I took when I was walking through Clayton here. And you'll see the students engaged and the teacher leading them through. And then you'll see this student right there, that second picture there on the left, of the student actually hearing the word and then mapping those individual sounds to the letters that represent them using Elkonin boxes. So each box represents a specific sound. Now, on the right, you'll see small group, direct dyslexia intervention in action, provided by Ms. Rush on the top and Ms. Young on the bottom. And this is an example of direct dyslexia instruction that's provided by highly skilled and highly-trained interventionists. The instruction is explicit. It's systematic. The concepts are building on each other. There's lots of repetition, and the intervention is providing a lot of opportunities in a small group for students to practice and get that feedback that they need. Awesome. You'll see here some related service providers on the left, and speech pathologists. They also support literacy for our students with disabilities. So on the top left is an example of a written response that a student completed during speech therapy. So again, that speech therapist is reinforcing oral language through the writing system. And this student was describing their first trip to Chick-fil-A, which I think is really important and notable. And then we see there, on the bottom, we have a speech pathologist, is Molly Haygood. And she's using high-tech speech generation technology to support a shared writing activity with a student. You also see on the right our existing technology teams, Carrie Edelman, Nicole Roser, and Sher Goldberg. And they're actually presenting to our other related service providers like PTs and OTs, specific tools that can be used in the classroom to support accessibility for students.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. And so I like the root-system analogy and the things that foundationally need to be put into place. And I think it's appropriate when we think about the original evaluation report that we received from Dr. Stetson and how that has informed our work for the last, at least, year and a half or so as a district. One has been, you'll see those investments around leadership and shared ownership for inclusive practices and the investment across that. And then the high-quality instruction associated with the systematic implementation of the practices that we're beginning to work on with our team members. I think from the prior meeting that was held, there were several high-leverage practices and strategies that were part of just-in-time training that Dr. Lee and I've had an opportunity to be with the team to see in place around really structured conversations, scaffolding that instruction, which is very important for a number of learners and is part of the high-quality evidence-based practices we'd like to see. As we are going into schools alongside those team members, that is a new practice or a revised, retooled practice, if you will, to really bring instructional rounds from all of those lenses. This week alone, I think they've done more. We've been a part of four of those instructional rounds. So the same boxes that Dr. Lee was mentioning at one school, we saw that in terms of the spelling and implementation at another campus. And then really important inflection points with sentence stems and other structures for students to be able to implement those things. That is part of really one, two, and three of the report. And it's going to be critically important for the implementation of a strong-tiered model for all of our students that builds those high-quality instructional practices and structured conversations into place throughout the system. So I just want to bring that in as a, any of the priority work has been part of establishing that root system to build the understanding, the mindsets, and then the practices for us to latch on to over time. Importantly, with adult learning and with implementation, there's both the initial training and development, and then you have to have that coaching and guidance and cyclical feedback, as well as job-embedded practice. That's what the instructional rounds and other components are a part of and what our teachers are working on in their learning communities as well. The last picture that I have here is just related to the instructional tools and investments. All of our teachers have access on the right to high-quality instructional strategies. Those are built into the instructional playbook for students. They're often aligned to the accommodations for students that can be built on the front end into lessons with great intention and natural inflection points, as well as instructional accommodations and modifications aligned to the high-leverage practices for students with disabilities. Research proves that these strategies help students process and remember information, and certainly in terms of accessing high-quality reading and understanding of texts.
Thank you. Okay. So as we look ahead and we think about how we continue to collaborate across all departments to provide support to our campuses, our leaders, and our teachers, it's real important to keep coherence at the forefront. So there are six key areas that we're going to revisit, we're going to review, and we are going to strengthen. I'm going to briefly touch on each of these key areas and really try and state what the goal and why it's important for us to focus on these areas as we move ahead. So number one, our multi-tiered system of support framework. This is a major focus, that we are currently working on building everyone's knowledge around for a deep understanding. And we are now going to work on transferring that knowledge and putting it into practice. So as we think about how our teachers are going to be engaging and doing practices in their classrooms, it's important that they are part of the observation and feedback process. Why? Because we want leaders to have a clear understanding of what they're looking for in classrooms. And not just in classrooms, but really in interventions and PLCs. And that's important so that they're able to give our teachers really precise feedback on how they can continue strengthening those practices. Number two, our universal design and differentiation. So when our leaders and our teachers implement this effectively and consistently, it really promotes inclusive and equitable learning spaces. And that's our goal. We want to make universal design a real focus because it leads to students having those opportunities each and every day in their learning environment. We want them to be able to participate and engage fully, regardless of what their abilities are or cultural or linguistic needs. Number three, a deepened emphasis on inclusive practices. So we currently do have guiding principles for inclusion, but we want to ensure that our leaders and teachers really understand how do we plan for implementation of these inclusive practices? And then how do we make these practices a habit? How do they just become part of our culture? This is what we do every day. And not just on our campuses, but as a district also, and in every single classroom. So this also requires that our teachers and our leaders are always thinking forward and leading with, what barriers do we see? And how do we plan for those barriers? And then how do we implement really strong structures so that all of our students are succeeding? Number four, an improved use of evidence-based practices and accommodations. So as we look at instruction across all of our tiers of support, we want to be sure that every single activity, every single strategy that we are using has proven to achieve the highest results for all of our students. And only when we use these evidence-based practices can we ensure that our students have the access and they can participate in their learning. This is really one significant way to remove barriers and really increase student achievement across for all students. Number five, increased system alignment and outcomes. So in order for our system to move and progress, we have to have one vision. We have to have a deep understanding of that vision, and we all have to move in the same direction. And so our supports have to be aligned. Our resources have to be aligned. And then there has to be a collaborative effort because all of the parts in our systems have to move together. This is from departments, to classrooms, to teachers, to leaders. This currently can be seen in our initiatives that have a clear path of what our work should look like and within a very specific timeframe to see those progress and results. And lastly, improved implementation of student-centered planning and services over programs. So our goal is to provide personalized and inclusive learning experiences that promote engagement, student growth, participation, and success. We want all of our students to have the opportunity to reach their absolute fullest potential. And we want their desired outcomes, these desired outcomes require intentional planning and a real focus. There's not one magic nugget that I can give you to say, this is the curriculum. This is the way. But we can teach and we can equip our principals, our leaders, our teachers to utilize our current resources and our current curriculum as an avenue in order to create these student-centered learning. Right? All right. Thank you. All right. So I have some new data to share. So we use in Austin ISD the NWEA MAP Reading Fluency Platform, which is a sister platform to MAPGrowth. Now, we haven't talked about this before, but we use this to screen students for dyslexia in grades kindergarten and first grade per state requirements. So being flagged indicates possible risk factors for dyslexia or other reading difficulties. And typically, we're seeing weaknesses, students who are flagging, we're seeing weaknesses in letter-sound awareness and phonics skills. But a flag doesn't indicate a diagnosis of dyslexia or reading disability. So I want to be really clear about that. It just indicates risk factors. All right. So if a student is flagged, or when students are flagged, CST or child study teams meet to review additional points of data to determine what's next. Is that going to be supplemental instruction in the class? Is that going to be small group intervention? Or does that mean that the student needs to be referred for an evaluation? Now, I want to review the results from our K1 dyslexia screening data for the last three years. And we're only going to look at first-grade data. And this data is being reported in English. All right. So in 2022, on the left there, almost 45% of students flagged for possible risk factors. In 2023, we see that approximately 47% were flagged for possible risk factors. But look here at January 2024. We see a 12 percentage point decline to 34%. That's significant and trending in a very positive direction. Now, keep in mind, our Early Literacy Initiative with a focus on direct and systematic phonics instruction launched in the fall of 2023. And that included ordering the K through three phonics kits, adding some instructional specialists to our academics team that really focused on early literacy, as well as investing in that literacy-first district-capacity-building model across seven AISD schools. This is very promising data, and it supports the increase on direct and systematic instruction across our district in the area of phonics. I'm going to pass it on to Superintendent Segura now.
Thank you, Dr. Cherry Lee. You know, one of the things that we talk about often is, you know, are there leading indicators? Are there things that we're beginning to observe that allow us to, you know, understand that, you know, we're making movement in perhaps the right direction? And so this is just one of those data points that we can look to and say, you know, the percent difference is meaningful. It's not, you know, within a range of error. It's not a 2% or 3% adjustment. But it also correlates to investments the board made, right? By way of the budget. We just talked about the curriculum initiative. We started that in April of 2023. You know, there was a conversation, you know, here on the DIAS with the board, and we recognized that we need to do something quickly to be able to support our students at the beginning of August of 2024. Do we think about literacy first? We think about the investments. And so for us as an organization, again, there are a variety of things contributing to some of these leading indicators. We're certainly not stopping. There's certainly a lot of things to look at, and a lot of things are contributing to this. But it's one of those things that we can point to and say, we begin to feel hopeful that the system is beginning to respond in the way that we would expect it to, given the investments and the strategies that we put in place. And so with that, I'd like to hand it back to President Singh, and we're happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Thank you. All right, so we'll now open the floor for our monitoring conversation. As a reminder, we have asked questions that are of technical or tactical nature before tonight's meeting. Those questions and their answers are posted within the agenda materials for the public to see. And you will find these at www.austinisd.org/board/meetings. Once you go there, you'll find today's meeting and the correct agenda items. So our question, our questions during the meeting will be strategic in nature, meaning we will ask questions to help us understand how the reality for our students is aligning with our vision. And again, we have some guidelines in our little packet, but I appreciate the questions that we've been asking that are really more strategic in nature. So we will start with the side of the DIAS.
I thank you for all the information and for the progress reports. I just have a couple of questions. I just want to get a better idea in terms of evaluating this data to understand how does AISD's performance on these measures compare to other districts or other states? Both like the STAR data, but more importantly, the progress measures of the MAP Growth. And if you don't have that information now, we can just put that as a to-be-learned thing. But I'm curious if we have comparisons.
Yeah, right now, I haven't compared our data in terms of STAR projected proficiency to other schools in Texas. We'd have to look at, and I'm not sure if I can get that data. I'd have to go find out if I can find, you know, school projected proficiency values from other Texas schools. In terms of growth, if we look at growth measures, which we're not today, those are normative values that, so when you look at a student's growth score, it's compared to other students in that same grade level across the nation. And if they fall within the 50th percentile, that means they've made growth just like 50% of students who took MAP in that same grade level. And if they're above, that means they grew slightly more than students nationally. But STAR projected proficiency values are not related in those same terms. So I can see if I can find those values, but I'm not sure if I'll be able to get them from other school districts.
So Dr. Kaufman, we'll work on that and see if we can identify some districts that we can compare ourselves against.
Yeah, and it's just, I guess, a bigger question that's around. You know, when we look at our STAR scores, we're looking at the state, and we're looking at our region, and we're looking at school districts that are comparable. And it gives us a better idea, knowing that we still have a lot of growth to make, but that we have a better idea of where we are in the race. So it's more about that. But I am, I want to ask my kind of recurring question though also, which is more to what you just said, which is who are the districts that we want to emulate with this data? Because that says something again also about where the root causes are for our students' performance. And we can see what's, you know, internal and what's kind of, you know, what's external to our current results. So I really just want to continue asking, are there districts, like we're at 30%, 28%? Are there districts that are at 60%? Are there districts that are at 95%? Are there districts that are, you know, that we are trying to emulate when we're reaching for our results?
So currently, when we compare ourselves to other districts, we compare ourselves to the Texas Urban Council, TUC districts. I didn't prepare to, you know, comparisons to TUC districts at this time.
Trustee Kaufman, I get, I understand.
Again, it's not, I don't really need us to compare to, you know, Houston or Dallas or San Antonio. I really want to just kind of know who are the guiding stars that are showing us the way, right? Because given the importance that the state places on these results, surely there must be outstanding districts that are performing at a high level on these. And so who are those districts that we can learn from when we're doing this work?
And I think we can definitely pull something together and provide it to the board, trustee Kaufman. And because it's MAP data, there are opportunities, I understand, to look at other school districts across the country. But I'll go with the team and see what we can pull together. And again, you know, for me, it's certainly want to identify where we might have opportunities to learn, but also recognizing that, you know, there are certain demographic similarities that we'd want to compare ourselves against, and just making sure we provide that to the board and that clarity.
Okay. Again, and I'm not asking for a lot of time to be invested in that. I just really want to keep that in our mind. And then going back into a little bit to the root cause of these results, you know, what does our data tell us about students' ability on those different foundational pieces of the tree, right? So what does our data tell us about students' ability to decode? What does our data tell us about students' ability to, about their fluency? About their vocabulary? About their oral language development? Like, do we, do our, do we, for root cause analysis, do we have that data to help us understand where the students are succeeding or falling short?
So my office doesn't deal with that level of data, but my understanding is, is that teachers can go to the NWA reports and they identify strands. And based on how students answered particular questions, you know, a student did poorly in decoding, but they did well in this area of literacy. That's out of the expertise of the level of data that I use. But those reports are available to teachers, and I know we've done trainings on how they can interpret that data.
No, I think that's an excellent question, and thank you for asking that. So the MAP Growth 2 through 5 platform does not assess those basic foundational skills like oral reading fluency or specific phonics skills. The K-2 does. So our first grade students are actually taking, Kinder and First are taking the K-2, and then our second grade students are taking the 2 through 5. So when students perform below expected levels on 2 through 5, we need to dive deeper, and that MAP Reading Fluency Platform allows for that. There's other assessment tools teachers can use as well. But we can dive deeper, and we can use that MAP Reading Fluency Platform, K-5 in Spanish and in English.
Okay, I appreciate that because again, really thinking about where our students are.
Exactly.
Where is the issue at?
Right.
Demands that we ask, you know, not just, if you didn't pass this test, you can't read, right?
Exactly.
That's not that simple, right?
It's not, yeah. There's a lot of factors.
And then finally, this is a technical question that I would have preferred to have asked in advance so as not to waste time on the DIAS with it, but it didn't really come up until this presentation. So I just wanted to ask about that dyslexia screening page that you had.
Yes.
I know that was kind of an example of, you know, preemptive work to identify students and who address needs early. But you did say that that was for the English screener only, and that was new information for me. So I just wanted to ask a technical question. Like, do you also have that data for the Spanish screening?
We do. And I want to be clear, in 2022 and 2023, NWEA MAP did not have a designated MAP Reading Fluency screener in Spanish. We were using components of MAP Reading Fluency, but we had to look at those individualized components aligned with what the state required. We worked very closely with NWEA MAP on that to identify those components. But it's not a dyslexia screener per se. It's looking at those specific components. Now, this year, they do have a specific screener. They're not calling it a dyslexia screener, but it does meet the requirements. And they've given us guidance on how to determine students that are at risk based on that specific assessment. So students in kindergarten and first grade are being screened in both Spanish and English just so we can track their proficiency. We will conduct the screener in April for kindergartners. So we'll have that data for you as well at the end of April.
Okay, and again, I don't want to take a lot of time in this, but to clarify that. So if there's a Spanish screener and the English screener, are there bilingual identified students who are Spanish-English speakers who are being screened and identified through the English test? Or would that be?
That is an excellent question. So again, this is just determining flagged. So what we have teams do is come together, typically in grade-level teams, and they're reviewing students' results in both Spanish and English, and then other points of data to determine risk. And we actually report risk to the state because we look at both quantitative, the factors here, as well as qualitative factors. And obviously, we want to give the kids the best chance, right? So we're looking at Spanish, we're looking at English, and then teams and teachers are making that decision whether the student's at risk.
Okay, thank you again for the technical questions. Thank you again for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hunter.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. In attachment one, slide six, entitled GPM 1.2 Special Education, and also in the appendix, slide 38, key takeaways. Given what we know, as stated in the takeaways, second-grade students receiving services lag their peers in all racial groups. However, white, two or more races, and Asian students in second grade receiving services outperform Black and Latino second graders overall. What is your understanding of that data? And why was there negative progress or regression?
So this unfortunately is a pattern we see in STAR tests as well, going back to last year. One of the underlying factors to this that I've noticed happens to be these groups are disproportionately impacted by poverty. And poverty tends to have a negative impact overall on student performance. So that is one of the things that underlies this data. And part of a question I think Boswell brought up, trustee Boswell brought up last time, was like, you're not showing me the students who are at Dignot meets. And so that's a very interesting question. So I went back the next day, and I looked at Dignot meets, and I broke it up by demographic factors. There's six large groups that are overrepresented in that Dignot meets category. But what's interesting about that is every one of those six groups are 80% or more experiencing poverty, meaning that poverty is the underlying factor. And the one that wasn't 80% or more experiencing poverty was 78.8%. So it's pretty much 80. So while I don't know why this is occurring, and I can't speak to that, I can say one of the underlying factors that is pretty consistent in these trends is that students experiencing poverty have much lower performance levels. And you see that bubble up in the groups that are disproportionately experiencing poverty, which in Austin, in our school district, are Black, African-American students and Hispanics. They're disproportionately experiencing poverty. Now, what's leading to that? I can't answer that. I don't know. But from a numbers perspective, I can identify the things that underlie that data.
And trustee Hunter, one of the things that the team and I were discussing was, you know, where do these students show up in our system, right? And you can identify the schools where we have larger, you know, student populations that have these demographics. And so when you think back about, you know, the disruptions those campuses have endured over the last multiple years, you know, high turnover rate for educators, you know, high turnover rate for principals, you know, those things have an impact. One of the things that Patty and I just talked about, you know, earlier today was she pulled some data, and there were students who had, you know, a new teacher every year for three consecutive years. And so when you look at just the vacancy rates trends, you know, those are impacting our campuses that have historically been underserved, which are correlated to the parts of Austin that have high percentages of poverty. So it gives us really a focus and an opportunity to build an initiative around, you know, what we're finding in the root cause analysis.
Okay, so we can do nothing about poverty for our students. That's not, we can't do that, right? They're not going to not be experiencing poverty. So it sounds like to me, from what you just described, is we have a root cause. So what are the next steps, I guess, is my question? Because they're going to continue to experience poverty. We understand, I believe you said, teacher turnover, disruptions. So we seem to know what the problem is. What is our next steps to fixing those issues?
Supports. We have to ensure that our teachers feel supported. You know, if it's, our talent strategy has done a really great job with our instructional coaches. One of the areas that we are exploring is going deeper in providing a coaching cycle. We currently do not have one aligned coaching cycle. And that's one where a principal receives feedback, a teacher receives feedback. And also looking at lead teachers or content experts. An instructional coach definitely provides mentoring supports with practices like best classroom management. But we really need to hone in on experts that can guide our teachers during PLCs, during trainings, that are content experts. And so looking at data, not just from our district, but across all different districts. They have, you know, different surveys, different questions. But what it all comes down to is that teachers leave when they don't feel supportive, and that's their perspective. And so one of the ways that we can definitely ensure that our teachers feel supported is to go deeper into the content, provide training where there's multiple opportunities for them to practice, and it's on a consistent basis. It's not a one-and-done. And these are things that, you know, we've talked about before and that we definitely would like to explore.
And I think the one thing I would also add is, you know, when we think about a system, you know, I have to think about wraparound services. I think about, you know, all the things that our students need that are experiencing poverty to support them in their educational journey. And so, you know, as we explore, you know, partnerships with a variety of partners, and we can name them certainly, you know, making sure that they're supported and that we're resourcing them so that they are providing those supports at those campuses while we supplement with, you know, resources and talent strategy, while providing professional development and creating a culture and climate so that teachers are retained. So, you know, for us, it's really all of these things coming together to support the student from early in the day till late in the evening. And that should be reflected in the initiative, honestly, trustee Hunter. That's where we want to get to. Some of the things that Patty communicated as far as things that we're going to be doing moving forward, the hope is that, you know, we can come present to you as to where we are in the initiative as it aligns with those elements, so that you can see, okay, well, wraparound services, this is how we're attacking that. This is where you're going to see it, and this is the work that's been done over the last several months, and this is what the plan will be for the next several. So that's how it's being aligned.
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. So I have a question. And it actually refers to a question that's on board docs that trustee Boswell asked. And I really wanted to think about and give you all an opportunity to talk about how we are, how the performance of our students has changed from this time to, like, this point in time from this, I'm sorry, I can't speak tonight, compared to this time last year for our special ed, for students receiving SPED services. So I'm just wondering, it seemed like there was some good news there.
Yeah, and we talked about it.
I just want to make sure I was interpreting that correctly.
Absolutely, and we actually talked about this today and earlier in the week. And this, I believe what trustee, sorry, President Singh is referencing is the cohorts between second grade and third grade, and how we're seeing a percent increase for the second grade when compared third grade cohort to, this year's third grade versus last year's second grade. And so we had a conversation around that. And then we also talked about the test itself and how that also is paying an impact in this. And so I know Dylan and Dr. Lee, you'll both probably have something to share around that in more detail, but...
Yeah, and before you answer, if I may, and a specific data point that I was curious about was 23, so this school year, it seemed like there were 22% of our students receiving SPED services that were at meets and above, right? And then last year's second graders, so it was actually a different cohort of kids, but they were at 9%. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And what do we attribute that to?
The increase itself. So there's several things. Once again, when trustee Boswell brought this up last week, went back and looked more closely at that. First thing is, it's good news because that same cohort of students increased the next year. So if we look at their beginning-of-the-year results in third grade, they were at 18%. So they start, basically, they started off the school year stronger than they ended the previous school year, which is, usually doesn't happen. Usually you have summer slide or something. You don't expect students to start off the next school year stronger than they ended the previous one. So that's good news. So several things happened there. There was a change in the second grade test. Previously, we were giving second graders a K-2 test, and currently, we're giving second graders a 2 through 5 test. What's interested there, interesting there is we talked to NWEA, and they said it's a harder exam. But when we look at our numbers, our students this year have done better in second grade on that test that is considered more rigorous based upon NWEA standards. So we're seeing an increase in performance on a more rigorous test this year in second grade, which is great. And we're also seeing improvements in that same cohort of students from one year to the next. One thing I do have to bring up is the second grade students last year performed below their peers by about 18%. So part of this growth we're seeing might not be because this new second grade cohort is doing so much better, but because last year, that second grade cohort wasn't doing as well as their peers. But once again, this school year, they started off better. So we've caught them up. Maybe the summer programs that you all funded and started in order to improve literacy had impact. I can't explain exactly why that happened or what the cause of that trend was. I can just identify the different factors that may possibly influence it.
Okay, that's super helpful. So I think, so would it be correct to say that we have over twice, like, we've doubled the number, like, the percentage of second graders who are at meets on the MOI?
Yes, compared to where they were at the end of the year.
Compared to last year.
Yeah.
Like, that would be, that's something that, like, it took a lot of teasing out. Thank you, Secretary Boswell, for seeing that. And it's, like, that's big. Like, I want us to, like, just enjoy that moment because I think, I'm guessing it is a result of the investments that we've made. And I would be curious to get more as we're thinking about, as we're entering budget season and think about, you know, what was it that actually did contribute to this so that we can make sure that we fund that, quite frankly? So the other thing I wanted to ask was slide, okay. So I'm trying to, there's a lot of slides here, so I'm trying to square. I was, I really appreciated slides, what was it? Okay, it was way deep. It was slides like the third, it was in the 30s and 40s, where you're actually disaggregating by race and ethnicity and ECODIS level, which is what we are sort of accustomed to talking, like, leading with that conversation. And so I'm trying to square slide five, which says we are four percentage points away, or 47 students away from meeting our goal on third grade reading for students receiving special education. So that was slide five. But then on slide 33, we've got, you know, this is where I want to think about, like, how the aggregate data sort of, you know, masks what's actually happening. And so I wanted to just give you all an opportunity to tell me what key takeaways, not just reading what's on the slide, but really, like, as the practitioners, what are your key takeaways here, looking at the differences when you're looking intersectionally? And when we're talking about 47 students, you know, that kind of, like I said, it kind of, I want to hear more about when you say that, like, how does that filter through when you're looking at different student groups?
So realistically, that 47 students can come from anywhere, where, you know, it would be any 47 students that receive special education. where, you know, it would be any, any 47 students that receive special education students district-wide that are not at meets grade level or above. So, and we obviously have more than 47 students that fall into that bucket. So I can't, I guess I don't understand, yeah, what you're asking in relation to that. Like, because they're, they're not 47 students from a particular campus. They're not 47 students from a particular race. They're just 47 students. Now, are there more opportunities within certain student groups to improve that performance? Of course. And I think if we're looking at improving performance across the board from strictly a numbers perspective, like, if you're gonna decide, what group are we gonna focus on to have the biggest bang for our buck? It's gotta be students experiencing poverty. Because you're gonna hit students in every ethnicity and every other demographic group that's struggling academically. So if you focus on improving performance among that group, you're gonna hit a larger proportion of African, black and African Americans. You're gonna hit a larger proportion of Hispanics. You're gonna hit a larger proportion of certain special educations, certain, certain diagnosed special education students. So that would, I don't know if that answered your question, but from a numbers game, that's what I would say.
Well, yeah, I think one of the challenges we have is, when you disaggregate the data, it tells a story. And I think for us, you know, identifying, you know, where these students are within our system and ensuring that we're hyper-focused and supporting them and developing initiatives around them. And so, you know, we, we've talked about this, that, you know, the system's been designed to produce these outcomes, and our, our initiatives have to be disruptive enough to actually see these gains. So yes, it is 47 students really anywhere in the system, but, you know, our focus and our opportunity is really around those who've been historically underserved. And so, you know, that's, that's, you know, why we, we kind of do this is so that our forward-looking initiatives are responsive to the data that we're seeing.
If I can add something in addition to that, specifically around, that, that's why the system is responding with priority campuses and supports and the type of instructional rounds that are underway in partnership across all of teaching, learning, leading, and academics. And so there were prioritized campuses identified for just-in-time immediate supports and structures for structured conversations, not just find it in the curricular documents. It's clear, you should know what to do, but very much looking at what would be the appropriate STEM, structured conversations for lessons and curricular steps and teacher moves that are just in time coming up, and then opportunities for practice and opportunities for us to go out and, and the team, we're, we're part of that, to go out and, and support and, and give feedback and likewise learn. Because that's a learning piece to take the temperature of our system overall. So that's been critically important. The other piece is when you have adult learning training, it's just the first step. So systematic implementation, it leads to the question that you both, you asked and Trustee Hunter asked. If we have increased teacher turnover, if we know that we have students who have increased mobility, or we have students having a number of factors that are influencing their educational experience, that's where the opportunity for greater consistency comes into play, greater resourcing with instructional coaching and supports comes into play. So that when you have novice teachers with the correct curricular materials, resources, and coaching, they're not demystifying what they need to do from the get, from the jump, that there are tools and structures that are in place. And so we've been working quite a bit around mindsets and awareness and that kind of broad-based piece for shared ownership. But that's where the traction will start to come related to that in terms of students. So it's not, it's about the system. It's not even the way the, part of it's where people live or where they are. It's not the system entirely set up, but the system can be set up for more infused supports into spaces where we know students need them. And that's, I think, what Deputy Rodriguez was likewise reinforcing.
Thank you. I really, that's kind of what I was looking for, is like, what are we doing from, through the equity lens? Like, where are we putting more resources where they are needed? So that's helpful to know about the priority schools. Do you, so what strategy, so looking at the extra supports that you all have put into the priority schools, what are you, do you have data on, like, you know, and can you explain what strategies worked or didn't work and, and like, what we learned specifically from looking at that?
So we are pulling data. Some of the data that we're pulling is actually based on questions the board asked over the last couple of weeks. You know, I think one of the things we keep talking about is consistency and implementation. You know, I don't know that we're quite yet at a point where I can tell you, you know, this initiative in this location had this specific improvement. It's a combination of things. And one of the things that's really hard to, to define is, you know, what is the impact of having a three-year, a teacher with years of experience in a school that's been historically underserved versus a novice teacher who's just coming into the workforce? And so I think for us, there's opportunities. Some things are easier to define, like literacy first, or perhaps the supports that we're doing, you know, with, with, with some of the, the schools. But as of right now, we are pulling some of that data to help inform the budgeting process. I just can't provide anything more specific at this time.
Thank you. All right, all right, thank you. That's our only questions. Secretary Boswell?
And thank you all very much for all of this, really appreciated. And thank you for the written answers. And that was extremely helpful. And I really want to flag for people, I don't want to ask a question about it, but just flag all of the really thoughtful answers you gave about students who may be over-identified and what that means for expectations and opportunity when we're speaking about our African-American students, our emergent bilingual students, our students experiencing poverty, that there may be some misidentification, some over-identification based on, and you wrote really thoughtful answers to that. So just want to flag that for anyone who's interested. Thank you. And I would love to go back to slide 21 about the dyslexia screener, which I think was a really, at first, I was like, really? And then it's like, really? And so that's so exciting to hear about that. And I would love to hear a little bit more about what this means for student experience and achievement, kind of how this is translating into those other layers of data we're looking at.
Yeah, absolutely, no. So what this means? Well, this means that less students are showing, that they're demonstrating difficulties in phonics, letter sound awareness, sound awareness. I had the opportunity to go to observe that screener in action. It takes about 15 minutes in Spanish or in English for students to conduct it. So they're on their iPads or their Chromebooks, and they've got their headphones on, and they're, you know, moving through a series of skill-based assessments that is really drilling down to see if they do have foundational weaknesses in those areas. So the good news is, is we saw that, you know, very significant decrease in the number of students being flagged. So I think that's an early indication that we are seeing strong, you know, early literacy instruction in our first grade classrooms. Hopefully, we'll see the same thing in our kindergarten screening data as well.
Thank you very much. I'll be excited to see that when you bring it. And then, yes.
I guess the one thing, we talked about it in terms of number of students. We talked about the other way as far as numbers of students, 47, but this represents over 400 students, right? So can you speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. A couple of things. So yeah, that's 400 less students that flagged this year as compared to last year and the previous year. And what does that mean for instruction? Well, it means that students are gonna need less intervention, less supplemental instruction, you know, potentially less referral. It, it's really, it's, it's, it's trending in the right direction. That's what we want to see. Because we want to see students achieving those foundational skills. Because the goal is not to teach phonics instruction, you know, forever, right? We're gonna continue to support phonics and higher-level phonics, which is word work with, you know, prefixes and suffixes and Greek and, you know, Latin word parts. We want to see that in third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and up. But we want to get through the, the basic skill of decoding, right? We want to hit that, we want to get, we want to, you know, give students the opportunity to remove that barrier to comprehension. That's key, yeah.
Yeah, so that's exciting to see what it means for the students who have not been flagged, that they have those skills and that's showing up on our data. And for the students who have been flagged, does that mean that they get more concentrated supports? Do we expect that to be showing up?
Yeah. So if they, if students are flagged, again, teams are required to meet this month in February to look at multiple points of data. Perhaps they were screened in Spanish and did not flag. We don't have concerns. They're just, you know, developing their English skills and English proficiency. But perhaps, you know, students are needing extra support. So what might that look like, right? What do those supports look like? We do have Imagine Learning as a supplemental tool. Again, that's a supplemental tool, it's not an intervention. We have our HMH resources, which have tier-two or tiered interventions. And we can also look at more intensive interventions and supports for those students if that's necessary as well. But it just gives another element or another piece of data that teams are gonna review to determine what's next, right? What's next for the student? Are they struggling in phonemic awareness? Like, I'm having difficulty unblending the sounds in the word "scratch." S-c-r-ach. Wow, there's a lot of letters in that word, but not as many sounds, right? And, and I, my ability to do that is gonna help me do what? To spell, right? And so spelling and reading reinforce each other. So it's just, it's gonna give us so much data on these students and really the specific skills that we need to target and support them with.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'd love to go back to slide 26, which with President Singh, we talked about. And I think that's another exciting one, and I'd like to go a little deeper with that one to get a sense of, we're seeing that really exciting growth for, you know, second grade, and obviously, two cohorts, but looking at that spring to fall. And then with our third graders, really, do we have an understanding of why the second graders are leaping forward? And we go to slide 25 with the same line and why the third graders are really stagnating? And again, we're looking at two different cohorts, spring to fall, but we see that big growth for our second graders and really not for our third graders. Do we have a sense of what's going on there?
So one factor that can influence that is the fact that second graders last year were performing below their peers at all levels. So at the end of the year, second graders were at about 38% project, star project proficiency, and all the other grade levels, three through five, were around 49. They were all 49 points something. So they're about, you know, 18 percentage points below their peers. That wasn't true for third graders. So, so, you know, part of that difference we're seeing is because they did poorly last year compared to their peers. If there's other factors related to that, I can only tell you what the numbers might explain it. I don't know what other factors instructionally could have influenced that or, or lack of trend in third grade compared to second.
And one of the things we've talked about, I'm sorry, Trustee Boswell.
Oh, no, please.
We were talking about the disruptions that our third graders would have experienced in kindergarten and first grade, and really recognizing that the learning environment during that time, due to the impact of the pandemic, really disrupted learning. And so, you know, we talk about that cohort and tracking them and providing supports, but this is, I think, one of those things that, you know, kind of communicates how that impacted our students. And so we've talked about that a fair amount, and that's something else, I think, that contributes to that difference.
And that, I think that's a really interesting, just to think about what kind of resources you may need from us for, for certain groups that were impacted in, in special ways. So I think it is really interesting to see that group, that pattern showing up in that group again. And also very exciting to see the pattern showing up on our second graders, so. And, and suggesting that some of the investments may be paying off. So those, those promising moments are helpful, thank you. I have one other question, just to get a deeper understanding of what we're looking at in our first two data slides, if we're looking, no, our second, slide five and slide six. When we're looking at our third graders, and we have about 1,200 third graders receiving special education services, and then we're looking at our second graders, and they're about a third less, you know, quite, quite a number, hundreds fewer, only 855. And do you have an understanding of, of why that's the case? And is it a delay that more will be identified? Or do we think there's something else going on there? And how is that showing, how is that impacting our data?
I think it's majority due to the exclusion of Spanish testers. Because remember, second grade, we don't include Spanish because NWA doesn't provide us with the star projected proficiency value for them, yeah.
So we don't think those students are missing, we just think that's, okay, that's extremely helpful, thank you. Okay. And then I only, I have one other question about slide 15? If it's still the same slide? It is, yes, about the providers. And I know at one point, there was an investment in all cults in the district. And I know, you know, plans and trends change, and we have a big variety of people. And are we seeing any difference in student outcomes in terms of which kind of expert, expertise students have access to? Is that something we're tracking and something we're seeing?
We track very closely the dyslexia intervention. So basically, at every campus, we know that, obviously, the intervention is what type of intervention they're providing, and then what children are receiving that intervention and what lessons they're on and so forth. And we have not seen any differences in the progress of students. Those decisions are made in the R Committee decision, right? So R Committees are coming together, they're reviewing the students' needs, and they're determining what types of services and supports that student may need. We are still supporting, thank you, Austin ISD Board, but we are still supporting the Calt Initiative, the Certified Academic Language Therapy Initiative. And we are also supporting SLDI, which is the Structured Literacy Dyslexia Interventionist credential. So Calt and SLDI are both credentials. So we are supporting that higher-level training and credentialing. SLDI is a 12-month program through Region Four. And then the Calt Initiative, we partner with the Dyslexia Center of Austin. Yeah, so we are supporting training in both of those programs, yeah.
And, and, but not seeing different outcomes based on what students have access to?
We are not. And one thing that we are promoting training, as are these training facilities, universities, evidence-based, all of it supports. The importance of differentiating even with intervention. So you can, the intervention itself is really a boxed curriculum, right? It's the driver of that intervention, the interventionist, where the magic is happening. So do I need to slow down the pacing of this intervention? Do I need to repeat lessons? Do I need to provide more opportunities for the students to practice? Do I need to be partnering with that general education teacher so that they're also giving that student additional opportunities to practice inside the gen ed classroom? So again, it's the interventionist that's, you know, the magician, right? They're really the ones that are determining the pacing and supporting that intervention. The intervention name itself is important, right? And it's important that our interventionists are trained with fidelity and using the program with fidelity. But again, we focus on the interventionist and the strategies he or she is using.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Sorry, Trustee Sapata.
Thank you for, for your report. So I have some questions around, so you mentioned the, it sounds like an excessive amount of training you're providing for staff so that everyone becomes aligned and is working collectively to serve our students. So we recently got a list of campuses that don't have SPED teachers, that are missing a SPED teacher. So how are, how are we fully making sure those students don't stay behind? That's one. And then there's also when we have substitutes. How are we making sure that those students get continued learning when the teacher is absent? And sometimes they're, they don't come back. So that's, you can answer that, I appreciate it.
That's an excellent question, thank you, Trustee Sapata, for that. And so several things. We have spiraled supports when there, there's a special educator coming in at different points in the year to build that capacity and training there. I know that's not the entirety of your question. You're saying, what if no one's there at all? And how are we providing that ongoing specially-designed support or that appropriate inclusion support for students? As, as part of the shared ownership and part of that capacity building across the team, we recently were in, in a classroom this week where students were receiving supports with the very appropriate scaffolds from that general education teacher with the appropriate accommodations. And a number of those students were identified. That's, that adaptation piece was in place and being implemented with students. There were supports from another person under the direction of our special education department chair for that team, where the assistant or the para was able to provide supports for the students as well. So I will say, our special educators who are in the team are working extremely hard to likewise, we have, we're sending out our specialists, we're sending out our coordinators, which are limited in number, but to build that capacity in those team members as well. Folks are providing, are being provided additional supplemental structures and pay their co-planning. And the more that we have greater alignment in the system, it does not take the place of a high-quality, highly-trained and effective teacher in any case. We know that in the research, that is the most prominent thing. But it does start to create sort of a net of. But it does start to create sort of a net of support where there's more alignment for a student in those cases. We've been working with Chief Hoseck and the team to really, and with Mr. Ramos, to really not only look at what will be the aggressive structures and strategies in the budgeting cycle to bring in and improve upon and provide additional special educators where they're needed. We have over 900 special education teachers and comparable to that with teaching assistants or paraeducators. So they're a real important extension of the learning for our students. That doesn't even count for related service providers as well. And so we have been putting together structures on caseloads and supports and with the existing staff that are there to make sure that we're providing services to teachers. This year, Dr. Lee's team has been working more closely with the head of our team for providing additional training and support for substitutes. It hasn't been nearly as expansive for the level of training that you're referencing that all of our team members have been undergoing, but we're making some strides in that way to bring that more deeply to their attention and building that capacity with our instructional specialists as well. So it's really a systemic approach, but it is certainly an area that is, that we have to continue to work on and improve upon.
And you did mention teacher assistants, because I have met with many teacher assistants, and many times, they're in charge of the class. And so what kind of supports are they getting?
Sure. So first of all, you all invest in, and we're appreciative of that, additional days for our teacher assistants to receive additional training and supports. It's part of a Renew conference. To be quite frank with you, we've, we love folks having voice and choice and all the things they'd love to learn, but we've become a bit more aligned around those structures. And so for this year's Renew, for example, Dr. Frances Stetson and her team has a key tool and resource for paraeducators to go through baseline, if you will, training about supporting students, what that needs to look like, that model of inclusion and practices, as well as sort of how do you start to fade? Not fade to take away, but create and foster independence with students so that they're applying the skill with the appropriate coaching, or if it's one teach, one assist, or whatever the particular models that it's being implemented of the six co-teaching models or the pre-planning that's done by the teacher for that assistant to build that in as well. Furthermore, all of our teaching assistants have been a part of the ideal legal framework, and that has infused into it resources around building their capacity and accommodations, implementation of that, and the structures and supports so that are planned for, for modifications for students as well. They are a huge part of the backbone of our supports for students. They create and foster tremendous relationships with children, and we're very grateful for the work that they're doing. But what we've intended to do in the last couple of years is really invest and make sure they're not an afterthought in our professional learning model either. And so that investment of additional time is built into their days, not go get it on your own, we'll do overtime here or there, because that would be great, but it will not lead to an aligned or cohesive system that's going to really support our students throughout.
I was going to say, Trustee Sapata, you know, to speak specifically to the concerns around staffing, you know, though we are better positioned this year than we have in the past, one of the things that we recognize is there are still opportunities to fill positions, specifically in special education, as well as other areas of focus. And so what we do is, as a system, we have to create and identify solutions. And one of those, we're actually bringing to y'all, a legit item in 7.2, to identify partners to help us recruit educators into AISD. And so just wanted to make that connection there, that we're always trying to find opportunities to invite those who can provide support to AISD into AISD. And one of those is before you later today, so.
Selfishly, if I may, Superintendent Segura, because Dr. Lee wrote me a note, so I'm going to, I'm going to follow it. Just in the last, just this week alone, it's also a wonderful pipeline. A number of our teacher assistants want to remain as teacher assistants, but a number of them really are looking for an opportunity to grow with us in our district. And it's exciting to see that Chief Hoseck and her team are starting to create more and more connections for a teacher assistant, a teacher pipeline, for those that desire that to be a role, because these are folks that are having a multitude of job embedded training experiences each and every day by watching teacher moves in action, being there to support students. And so we're excited about what can be sort of the outcome for that as well. So just a huge shout out to all of our teachers and our teacher assistants.
Yeah, and I think the strongest example of evidence-based teaching with rich oracy happening in the classroom, we got to observe today in a pre-K classroom at Rodriguez, and that pre-K teacher was a teacher assistant for many years before becoming a teacher. So it was an amazing, it was an amazing journey that she, that she was on, and her teaching moves were spot on.
Yes, I have learned that in meeting with teacher assistants, that for whatever reason, they were not able to finish their dream to be a teacher, and that's why they're TAs. So I'm glad, and I heard you call them para-professionals. Is that what we're paying them?
You know, that is a term that is used in a number of districts in a number of states. We call them teacher assistants because we think of them as an extension of the education, educational and teaching process. And so that's been the term we use in Austin ISD. But some of the professional learning resources and tools that we gather, like from Dr. Stetson and Associates and from others, might use that term interchangeably.
Yeah, because they have really changed. That job description has changed a whole lot. I mean, they're almost teachers, you know? So I think that's something that we could also look at as we look at the budget. So the other question I have is, okay, we're talking about substitutes. Oh, you all had initiated parent orientations, and I didn't, I mean, it wasn't included in here, that's coming along, and now that is also helping parents to, to understand how this process is and be part of it? Was that the intent, right? The parent orientations for?
Yeah, absolutely. No, thank you for asking that question. Yes, we're offering ABCs in the IEPs, which is giving parents that are new to special education opportunities to learn about the process, how they can participate in R meetings, how their children is included in classroom instruction, and what those services and supports are going to look like for their child. We're also looking forward to partnering with VELA as well this spring. So we've been developing that service agreement, and they will also be supporting families with virtual and in-person in sessions in both Spanish and English. They'll also be offering new sessions for families new to special education, as well as specific sessions for families with children who have autism.
I think it's important to note, just like all students receiving special education services or general education students first, they should receive strong practice plus whatever the services and supports, the same for their parents. And so when I heard our colleagues talking about the outreach, and we've been connecting as well with parent support specialists to really build in that thread with parents, that's not necessarily for one department to do, but as a system, around what are the strong systematic practices that you can also build upon and apply in the home? Parents are an integral part of that. And so just like we look at system coherence and alignment, it's super best practice for our parents to understand how they can see, not just from class to class or grade level to grade level, but some greater alignment of how they can help their student in a way that is evidence-based, really appropriate in terms of research, and at least have an understanding of how that's being applied in our classroom. So we're excited about partnering with them as there's outreach to parent support specialists, not just for the special education department to do, but for our system overall, so that we give a push to our parents as well, which are your parents, my parents, our parents, right? That this is a critical opportunity for them to be included in the process.
Well, and I agree. I think, I just want to piggyback on what Trustee Hunter said about poverty, because poverty is always going to be there. I get, I kind of take offense when we talk about poverty. I grew up in poverty. I didn't know I was poor. I didn't know all my neighbors were poor. We were all treated the same at school. I mean, well, not at the beginning, but as long, and I feel that when I've been in many of my schools and other schools before I was a trustee, that seems to be like an assumption that because they're poor, they can't learn. And so how do we train to not think that way? That we're at a point where we're supposed to be challenging everyone across the district equally and not based on their income? So, so that's one thing that I disagree about, the poverty, because my grandson grew up in poverty, he went to UT, and he's going to be a lawyer, you know? So there is no limit to what we can teach our students if we all believe that all students can learn at high levels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Sapata. And I'm looking at my LSG Cliff Notes here, and I'm going to, you know, the questions that you were asking were really good, and it sounded like you were kind of talking about strategies that were working and not working related to para-professionals. And so I just kind of wanted to link that back as we're, as we're moving through this conversation. So thank you. Any other trustees have additional comments or questions? All right. Thank you. All right. So thank you all for this really productive conversation and all the great information. Really appreciate the hard work. So now we must vote on whether or not we will accept this monitoring report. As a point of clarity, we are voting to accept this report as a formal acknowledgement that we had a satisfactory conversation with the superintendent and have a deeper understanding about how the current reality for students lined up with our vision for them. So at this point, I will entertain a motion for the acceptance of this monitoring report.
I move to accept the report.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Sapata to accept the monitoring report, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, trustees, for taking part in the shared commitment to students and student outcomes, particularly around special education, which we know is priority 1A. All right, so let's see here. We will now move to our information reports and updates. Mr. Segura, would you please introduce the next item?
Absolutely. As the team makes the way up, certainly want to thank you, President Singh and board. Tonight, we have an update on the TEA Special Education Agreed Order. And I'd like to ask for Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief Officer of Governmental Relations and Board Services, and our TEA monitors, Lisa Shockley and Sheri Marsh, to join us. Thank you for joining us this evening, and free to go. Dr. Reach?
Thank you so much, Superintendent Segura, for President Singh and board of trustees. Last week, or I'm sorry, last month, we visited about the TEA order, and I was able to go in depth on kind of the history that brought us to where we were and what makes up our order. So while I don't want to go back through that history, we do want to talk about some of the things we've accomplished and some of the things that we have coming up in these next couple of weeks. So overall, as I shared last time, our approved order has 99 tasks, and we currently have completed 30, which is an increase of four since the last time we met. This month, we have four additional tasks that we will submit to TEA, one that I will submit tomorrow. And truth be told, I was actually typing up the letter while we were going through the last item, so we're all ready for that one. And then we have one that's due on May 1st that will also be submitted before we visit again next time. Of course, in priority one, the satisfying corrective action, we will continue to look through our caps. Oh, and I should share that, I'm going to go through this a little bit quickly because I want to get to our exciting guests who are with us today and allow them to share some of the updates as well. Our priority two, we're starting our development of the MTSS manual, which is a big deliverable for us coming up on March 1st. And then we have nothing due in priority three. And then in priority four, we will publish the names of our CFAC. And as a reminder, our first meeting will be held on February 21st. That meeting is open to the public. We will have public comment during that meeting, so we welcome members of the public to also attend our first CFAC meeting. Also for Lone Star Governance, our board just completed at our last meeting your first LSG self-evaluation, which we submitted to TEA. And then the next due date we'll have for that is April 25th. And also in April around Lone Star Governance, the board will do the first reporting on the three-month average that will count towards the approved order. So those are kind of our big upcoming items. Now I'd like to first welcome our monitors and ask if they can share a little bit about themselves, and then we'll go through their update on the approved order.
Thanks, Jacob. Well, good evening. I met some of you, but it's so nice to say hello to you in person, up close. I'm Sheri Marsh, and just a little bit about me. I have 30-plus years in special education. The bulk of my work was actually at Education Service Center, Region 20, which is a service center in San Antonio. And I was the special education director there for 15 years. And I supported districts just like yours through these types of initiatives. And then I retired from that entity, and I started doing some independent consulting work in special ed. So that's, that's my background.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Shockley, and I have about 27 years, almost 28 years, experience in special education. I've served in the role of a special education teacher, diagnostician, a coordinator, a supervisor, a director, and I'm currently an executive director. I've been in an administrative role for about the last 10 years. And so this work is very exciting for me. I love working alongside Austin ISD and partnering with all of you. I'm very humbled and honored to be here, working and partnering with your staff to work through the agreed order.
So, so we're just going to jump right in. It's perfect how it ended up that we presented right after the special education team, because they use some language that you're going to hear in our presentation. They said things like increased system alignment, and that's what Texas Education Agency really wants from you guys, is sustainable systems. They talked about improved implementation of services, and we're going to talk about that. They talked about multiple-tiered systems of support and tier-one instruction, and that's part of this agreed order. And then at the very end, based on your question about parent training and the parent orientation, that's a huge piece. And so it's so nice to see how fluid it is from your team to what we're going to talk about tonight. So you guys probably know these by heart, the four priorities that are in the agreed order. So priority one, Lisa's going to visit with you guys about, and those are just the foundational compliance pieces. Those are the basic corrective action plans and compliance components. Priority two is all about that professional development and building capacity through systemic development. Priority three is your data management system, and priority four is a parent outreach campaign. Now you notice all of these are the special ed components. I do want to clarify, there are two strands that come out of the agreed order. One is the board governance piece that you guys know very well that Ashley Paz works with you on, and one is the special ed that Lisa and I on. We collaborate with Ashley on a lot of these pieces, but today, we're just going to talk about the special ed components. So I'm going to flip it to Lisa to get started.
Thank you, Sheri. So I'm going to jump right into priority one, foundational compliance. And I'm so happy to report that the backlog evaluations has been cleared, and the compensatory services for that, those delayed evaluations and eligibility determinations, all of the compensatory services have been discussed and determined via the R Committee meetings. And so congratulations on that. That is a huge accomplishment, and you all should be very proud of the hard work that was poured into that. So, and there are a lot of words on this slide. I'm just kind of summarizing for you. And then in terms of the corrective action plan, 11 of the 14 caps have been, that were identified in the order, have been fully corrected and closed out. Three are pending completion of the compensatory services. So three of those corrective actions are still working through, the compensatory services are in progress. And all 14 caps have addressed that non-compliance. And all 14 caps have addressed that noncompliance. And so all compensatory services were considered. The noncompliance has been considered and addressed for all 14. So congratulations. That's really great work. I do want to, on the next slide, talk about what's coming up in the future. And so while the district has made great progress, our work is not done. And so we have to continue the momentum with focusing on those evaluations and continued compliance. And so Austin has to obtain, they have to achieve a performance level of zero on the federally required element 1. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that so I can tell you a little bit about what that means. Level zero, I'm sorry, they have to achieve a performance level of zero, which is meets requirement on that FRE 1. So the federally required element is comprised of state performance plan indicators. And it's comprised of six of those. But in our agreed order, FRE 1 really focuses on only two of those SPP compliance indicators. One is SPP 11, which is timely evaluations, and SPP 12, early childhood transition. And so in order for Austin to achieve a performance level of zero, we have to maintain compliance with those federally required elements agreed to in the order, which are timely evaluations and early childhood. And what that means is those are 100% compliance indicators. And that, so, and just as a point of clarification, the U.S. Department of Education and the Office of Special Populations sets the compliance targets for these SPP indicators. And for those two, the compliance target is 100%. And so I wanted to clarify that because I know a question has, questions have come up about the 100% compliance. And on the next slide, just for your reference, I included the Code of Federal Regulation citation so that you would have that. And this CFR relates to the evaluation and timeline regulations aligned with the federally required element 1. Sheri?
So the next priority is about effective practices and systemic development, which really is about building capacity in all of your team members across the district to serve students with disabilities. So you have probably heard a lot, Jacob has probably shared the numbers, about the extensive staff development training that your staff has been through. And so you can see on the screen all the different training components that team members went through to start building capacity. And not only that, the special ed leadership team developed those trainings based from material that came from the IRIS Center, which is out of Vanderbilt University. And they customized it for your district to make sure it was enhanced to kind of match with what goes on in Austin ISD. Lisa and I reviewed it, and it was great material. And then it went out online. And so the other one for the administrator that's up there, the second bullet, that one came directly from TEA, and it was on TEA Learn System. So that all got completed. Some other things in Priority 2. Jacob just mentioned that March 1st, the MTSS Manual will be submitted. And I have been working directly with team members from multiple departments, not just special ed, because it's not a special ed piece completely until the end of that framework. So working very closely with them. And I know that that's great work. And it's based on, again, content that came out of the Meadow Center out of UT. And they're called the tier modules. So that's what that's based on. You've heard a lot about the Stetson audit or the third-party audit that's being conducted. That's well underway and scheduled to come out April 30th. And then that's going to drive the special ed strategic plan that's going to be publicly reported June 30th. And so forthcoming for Priority 2 is all just about continuous improvement in those areas. And so we just want to see all that work, all that capacity building that you're hearing, trickle down to the campus so you can see it and feel it in the classrooms. And part of the work that Lisa and I do is we're also conducting campus visits and going out and seeing that firsthand in the classrooms. And Dr. Lee and Dr. Romanet has also been involved in that. So that takes us to Priority 3.
Thank you. So for Priority 3, the first deadline for Priority 3 is August 1st, 2024. So while that seems like some time in the future, really, the work on this has been great. And I do want to note that the district and Superintendent Segura have really poured a lot of resources into this priority because this is huge. This is a big lift for the district. And so in order to accomplish what is being asked in Priority 3, there really are a lot of factors that go into this. Currently, working on customizing the system to meet the needs of Austin ISD and the reporting that's required. Looking for the development of comprehensive reports down to the campus level so that we know where are we on our evaluation compliance? Are we doing the right thing? Are we evaluating students within timeline? Are we catching the students? How long from the time of referral is it taking us to get the consent and get that evaluation completed? And so we really want to look, be able to drill down to the campus level to see where our successes are. And then where are some of the needs in the district and who may need some more support? And then really, integration with the student information system. How will our current vendor that we're contracting with, that Austin is contracting with, how will they work with the current student information system to integrate all of the data? And so moving forward, forthcoming, a steering committee has been established to help develop this project plan. A project manager has been assigned and working really to keep us on task so that we are able to meet this priority. And really, Austin really is looking at developing that data governance process, working closely with the instructional technology department. Technology's been highly involved with working with our vendor with, on creating this data management system. So great progress. We've got a lot of work to do. But I have confidence that the resources that are being assigned to this priority are going to help drive this success.
And then the final priority is all about the parent outreach campaign. So it's all about family engagement. And I will say, all the processes that needed to be completed are just about complete for this one. If you haven't had an opportunity to check out the website where all these parent resources are, they did, your team did a really good job of putting things together related to Childfind, related to, if Childfind doesn't make sense to you or you don't know that terminology as a parent, then they have a tab that also says, what do I do if I think my child needs help? Just they simplified the language a whole lot. And it kind of gives you the same information, just in a more friendly format. And then they also just have family engagement resources and all the training components there. So lots of information, support, and resources that are out there. Then also, as Jacob mentioned, the new parent advisory group, which is called the Special Ed Family Advisory Committee, or lovingly referred to as CFAC. It will be kicked off February 21st. And again, the team was very, very thoughtful in how they selected members because they wanted to ensure that the 15 parents on that advisory committee was representative of the entire district. So every vertical team is represented based on parent applications. And so they developed, like I said, a rubric that was very, very thoughtful and meaningful, how to make sure every voice was heard. And so just again, forthcoming things for Priority 4 is again, continuous improvement about parent engagement or family engagement and making sure that parents' voices are heard and that their children are served appropriately. So as Lisa started off saying, I just want to say, well, to date, all the requirements are met, which was a heavy, heavy lift. And so yeah, round of applause. Congratulations. But wait, there's more. Because you just need to keep building sustainable systems because it truly is about keeping it going. So no matter if the person in a certain seat leaves, the services for students with disabilities will continue seamlessly. But congratulations. And I guess we open it up for questions?
And before we take, I mean, before we ask for questions, certainly want to express my appreciation to both Sheri and Lisa. You know, it truly has been a collaborative partnership. We bounce ideas off one another. You know, we've had conversations around how to improve. And so just want to express my appreciation. I think we've been able to move the work in a very efficient manner. So thank you.
Thank you. I also want to echo the appreciation. It's clear that you both have some really great expertise and your heart is in it. And that's just what, you know, that's just what we need. So thank you. We were, you know, when you hear that you're getting monitors, you're like, oh, gosh. But you guys are real human beings and you're very nice. And we appreciate all that you're doing. So thank you. So trustees, at this point, do we have any questions? Secretary Boswell?
I have a question from Ms. Shockley and Ms. Marsh and also for our administration, which is, do you see, are you anticipating anything that's going to be an especially heavy lift that we need to be really aware of on the horizon? What are we looking forward, that we need to be really thoughtful about?
To be honest, I think the entire order is a heavy lift. And I think that Superintendent Segura has been very receptive and open to ideas and being a great thought partner. And so I think that, I think that all of it has been a heavy lift. And I think that those areas that may have been questionable are being addressed with a lot of resources and time and personnel being poured into all of those areas. And so I think that Superintendent Segura has been very receptive and open to those conversations.
Thank you very much for that.
Yeah. So I think coming up, you know, the things that keep me up later than maybe I should be. You know, we've talked about MTSS a lot, you know? And I think we don't appreciate how much of an impact it's going to have to the system as a whole, the amount of professional elements can be required to ensure that it is executed with fidelity and it's supported and it can be sustained. And so having a change management plan around it, making sure that we're communicating to everybody that's impacted, and it's a large organization. So that's going to be a significant lift. And then we talked about data systems, you know, for us, you know, we talked about August. And it is not, it is around the corner. It is very, very close. And so ensuring that, you know, the systems are up and running, but that we're testing so that when that day does come, we can produce a flawless report. And so I do have concerns, but we're working through it collaboratively. But both of those things are going to be significant for our system and organization.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And that's my last question. Just want to echo the appreciation that we have two people who bring deep expertise to this. So thank you for bringing that to solve our problems with this.
Thank you. Any other trustees have comments or questions? Yes?
Superintendent, so those two lifts that you mentioned, huge lifts. So you will keep us updated as to how we can support that as well?
Oh, absolutely. You know, I think, you know, we'll continue to have the TEA updates, the order updates. And we'll continue to provide updates via board update as we do every week. And then, you know, if we're going to make an adjustment in the plan and overall initiative, we'll be sure to communicate that to the board and to our community. You know, I think one of the things you'll find about me, Trustee Zapata, and I think the team certainly knows this, is we're always trying to identify the risk, weigh on it in advance, identify ways to mitigate it, but then also identify different ways to create, you know, alternative path so that we have redundancy, so that if we get to a place and we don't quite hit our mark, we have, you know, a plan and process to get there regardless. So we're constantly challenging how we're working through all of this. It does take a lot of time. It is resource-intensive. I think I even underappreciate it, how big this is going to be. But yes, we will continue to keep our community and our board updated.
Anyone else? Yes, Trustee Kaufman?
Trustee Boswell already asked my question. But I want to echo her comment of appreciation for the expertise you bring, but also express my appreciation for the collaborative effort and the recognition that you have of the expertise that's in the district and that we're trying to fix systems and not trying to fix people. And I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So this ends the section on the information reports from the administration. At this time, we will now move into the preview of the agenda items that will be considered for a vote at the next regular board meeting on Friday, I'm sorry, on February 22nd, 2024. AISD staff is available to answer any questions for tonight's preview. So we will begin tonight with Item 7, which is the Agenda Preview for Upcoming Business and Finance Items. So trustees, are there any questions on these items? Trustee Hunter? Okay, 7.2. Let's hear, feel free to ask.
Thank you. For Item 7.2, I was seeking clarification for the staffing services. Which positions?
So I can provide additional clarification. So we are looking to provide support for many different positions. So later, we do talk about special education, bilingual, world languages, core content, STEM, CTE, and humanities. So we do, it's really almost every position that we have within the education system. You know, for context purposes, you know, within Chief Hosek's Talent and Strategy Division, we have one person identified to recruit. And so this gives us the resources to be able to expand our reach. So it's really for all.
Okay. So this is for permanent staffing, not temporary staffing?
So it, we, there's two options. So there's an A and a B. And so the way that it works is, it's, A is for recruitment. And then if we need to fill a gap, we have the ability to leverage that resource if we need to do so.
Okay. And is there a possibility for the rollover of the opposite? So that if we have someone for temporary, and could they become a permanent?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on section, on the Business and Finance section? Okay. The next is Section 8, Facilities. Trustees, are there any questions on these items? Did you have one?
No. I'll put that in.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And the next section is 9, Policy. Trustees, are there any questions on this item? Yes, Secretary Boswell?
Just want to make the public aware that this is a district of innovation. I don't know if Dr. Reach wants to explain what's going on. That would be helpful. And then I just have a couple of questions.
Trustee Boswell, is there a time limit? Do we want a long explanation?
No, we want a very short explanation.
Okay, very short explanation. Thank you.
So quickly, District Innovation allows a school district to seek exemptions from the Texas Education Code. And what we're seeking here is an exemption from a new law that just passed this last legislative session that mandated that possession of any e-cigarette or vape be a mandatory removal. So in the past, that were true for vapes that may contain THC or other harmful drugs. But nicotine was treated differently. Under these new rules, it no longer is. And as a district, we believe strongly that there are other ways that we can address nicotine use by students than expulsion to a disciplinary alternative program. And so this will allow us to exempt ourselves from that mandatory removal and use other means to work with our students, especially for those first or second-time offenses. To be clear, how this is currently set up, it would not address THC. It would also not address students who may be selling vapes to other students. That would still be treated in a similar manner. But this will allow us to look at education for our students on their home campus before we ever consider a mandatory removal.
Thank you very much. And then I just have a few comments. I don't need answers now, but some of them I would love in our board updates. And then one question, I would And then one question, I would love to know what the plan is to bring our handbook into alignment, we'd like to discuss that in our governance planning. The board has to approve our handbook, and our handbook needs to be in alignment with this, and would love that to come back to us as a voting item. So would love to discuss when and how that happens in our next governance meeting. Would love to know in a board update, what our plan is to share this information with our families about this change. Would love to know if there's a plan being considered to address the records of students who were removed before we made this change, because this is something that we've been flagging as a problem since before the beginning of the school year, and that seems like a matter of basic fairness that we should consider. And then would love to know also in a board update, if we have a plan for increased education prevention and perhaps addiction treatment, and for working more closely with cities, with our city government to enforce, better enforce sales to minors, especially close to our campuses. Thank you.
Thank you, we can do that, all of those.
Thank you very much.
All right, Trustee Kaufman?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Reach and Mr. Segura. I just want to clarify a couple things. One is, does the, I mean, just to clarify for everyone, does the updated DOI plan require board approval?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so this is a legally required board action, right? Okay. And going back to the e-cigs, do you know what the rationale is for the, that legislation to have included nicotine? Like perhaps because of some of the uncertainty sometimes between whether something is nicotine or THC, and so wanting to eliminate that loophole for students? Or do you have any other rationale that you know of why they made that change?
Yeah, the rationale that was provided by the representative who brought the measure forward was what you stated, that there was uncertainty, often on understanding what was actually in a vape unit or an e-cigarette unit. You know, we, and it, why they can be tested, it is not a simple test, they can't always be done on campus, although I understand that technology is getting better. But it was because of the uncertainty of what is actually in there. And then the other thing that we know is that many times the cigarette, these e-cigarettes that students possess are coming from places outside of the United States. And so there may not even be the same level of monitoring to tell us, could there even be another foreign substance in there that we're not aware of?
Okay. And so given that there was a rationale, what do you feel the likelihood is that this would be approved, once the board approves it, that the state will approve?
So we are not the first district to, to seek this exemption, and the state has approved their plans. So I, I expect that they will continue to approve these plans, that if anything were to change, that would happen through legislative action later.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I saw on the timeline for this process of submitting an updated DOI plan that, that went to the DAC, what, was there any notable feedback from the DAC regarding, you know, in favor of this proposed plan?
Yeah, they were strongly in favor of it. They very much appreciated the educational portion that we wanted to bring. Mr. Adams, who oversees our disciplinary procedures, was able to attend and share more about the educational programming that we will provide to students, which they were very supportive of.
And then there are several, in reviewing the plan, this is the only substantive change to it, is addition of this exemption. So there are several exemptions that we've received previously, and those would continue under this plan?
That is correct.
So is, have you looked, I mean, have we looked at the district at the data to kind of assess the effectiveness of those other exemptions that are being continued? Like are they working for us, are they worth continuing?
We are continuing to still utilize the starting in day in the minutes, we're continuing to still utilize the 10% rule exemption and the exemption for the alternative certification for staff, that we as a district also decided to couple with having teachers take part in an alternative certification program, which was not a requirement. So to quickly answer your question, we are still utilizing them. I, I can't tell you right now, you know, what is the, we have not done an evaluation necessarily on the effectiveness of those things, but we are certainly still utilizing them.
I mean, I guess, I guess at the core of my question, is there a thoughtful process to review these before just continuing them, because that's what we did last time? Like is there a thoughtful kind of review to say, oh, this is something that's still beneficial to the district?
So can I, may I interrupt, please? I'm sorry. So I just wanted to note that there is, we're not sure, so, it might be helpful to have a off-the-dice conversation about this, although these are very important questions. I am concerned, because I don't know for sure if this would be neutral or count, like how this would be interpreted, if that's okay. I hate, I hate to interrupt, but I just, I mean, if it's a burning, burning issue, feel free to ask it or answer it, otherwise if this is something that we can discuss off the dais, that would be wonderful.
I can, I can just simply respond and say that, you know, I think a process to review, you know, what we've been doing, I think is appropriate. I'd, I'd have to get with the team and maybe bring something back or think through something, but we don't have one at this point.
Okay. I have several questions on the DOI exemption for class size, but I will withhold those for now, but I will note the importance of this issue for the public, because this is, you know, these are state laws that we're choosing to exempt ourselves from, and they are pertaining to issues that have, particularly the class size, that have strong interest for and against by teachers and by families. So I think it's a very important public issue that we're voting on to continue these. So I will submit my questions, I guess, in writing prior to the 28th, but I would like to see the answers included in the, in the.
As an attachment to the agenda item.
Highlight for the public that those, you know, that, to, again, stay involved by looking at the board docs and seeing the questions that are asked and the answers provided.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. So this will end our regular agenda preview. So we will now recess the open meeting at 8:19 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. When we are finished with the exec session, we will briefly return to the open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. And so thank you very much for joining us, and have a great evening. Okay, so we will now reconvene the open meeting at 11:55 PM. Secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Having motion by Secretary Boswell to adjourn, and second by Trustee Sapata, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The vote passes unanimously, the meeting is adjourned at 11:56 PM. Thank you.[1797.63][1797.63]